All right, at 6:30, I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law and adopt the agenda. Please stand and join me in flag.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to your mother for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Item three is comments from the audience regarding agenda items. This is the only time audience members may comment on current agenda items during this business meeting. As a reminder, comments can only be made about items listed on the agenda for this meeting. Before addressing the board, please state the agenda item number that you are discussing, your name and your address. You may speak for a maximum of five minutes. Any comments tonight? Okay, seeing none. Move on to item four. We have nothing for gifts and donations and recognition tonight. So then, item five is consent agenda. The consent agenda items are approved all at once and are one-meeting approval items. Five A is the approval of July vouchers, vouchers payable. Five B is the approval of June 26th and July 10th school board meeting minutes. Five C is approval of personnel recommendations, and five D is approval of early graduation requests. Would anyone like to remove an item? Okay. Motion to approve items A, B, C, and D.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Seeing non-motion carries. Item six is reports and discussion. So the first stop is facilities planning ongoing discussion with Bray.
Evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Quinn would like three. Quinn wants more. Quinn would like three, please. Just to lay him all out around.
Something's dead.
More than something.
So first, thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you. What we wanted to do tonight is basically give you part one of what will eventually be the full, complete study effort, okay? And so, if you remember back to when we started the process, we had-
Can you just introduce yourself again since it's being recorded for anybody that's-
Yep, fair enough. Yep, Michael Hacker with Bray Architects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yep. When we started the study process, we have talked about kind of two concurrent studies going on. The first piece is the infrastructure component, and the second piece is really focused on the academic elements, okay? And so, what we're here tonight to talk about is the two elementaries in the middle school infrastructure components, okay? And you can see, there's quite a bit of information here just in those three buildings alone on just the infrastructure. So what we decided to do was basically break these into two parts. So the first part would be this, and then in two weeks, we're going to come back and present the infrastructure at the high school, and then talk about some of the bigger picture academic components that tie the district together, if that makes sense to everybody. So I think this document can be presented page by page, and there's a lot of information here. The reality is, this is really, tonight, the goal is to hand this off to you and allow you to start to dig through this in more detail, so that when we come back in two weeks, we can provide you kind of an executive summary of it, and then ultimately answer any questions that you might have, okay? So what I thought I'd do is quickly just tell you what to expect when you start to dig through this, okay? And so, what we've done is organized the tabs by building, okay? So just as an example, if you were to flip to tab one, what you'll see is Edgerton Elementary School. And we always start out with an introduction, so that first page just gives you a summary of what the school is. Again, this effort is really to objectively just document who you are as a district from an infrastructure standpoint, okay? And so, we always start with the total building area, 56,000 square feet, total population of 452 students. We're on about six acres. We give you the grade configuration, a little more detail about parking, okay? Again, just a snapshot of who you are, kind of from that building's perspective. The next page, you'll see it as labeled page 10, it's that first pull-out 11-by-17 sheet. That gives you an evolution diagram of the building, okay? And that evolution diagram just gives you kind of the history of that facility, so what portions were built originally, and then from there, what subsequent additions were added We'll give you, you'll find existing site and existing floor plans, and we've gone ahead and labeled those per how they were used this last school year, so you can kind of get a handle on what grades were located where, and then obviously how you used each of the different spaces in the building. Then we get into the really exciting stuff, which is the engineers' reports. And so there, you'll see plumbing, HVAC, electrical, every system, a analysis of what you have in the building, an observation of how that's functioning, whatever that system may be, and then ultimately, a recommendation on what to start to plan around, okay? And a lot of that you'll see does correlate to recent investments and investments in past referendums or past major projects throughout the district. So again, if you had replaced a boiler in the mid-'90s, you'd see that about 20 years, fast forward 20 years to where we are today, the life expectancy of that system's starting to fail. So it's not, you'll see in their recommendations around how to start to plan around some of those improvements, okay? And the goal there, I think, first and foremost, is to give you a document that you can start to plan around from a long-term capital improvement standpoint, but then as we start to talk about architectural solutions and potential future referendum dialogue, this gives us a framework of what we need to assume within those projects, okay? So quite a bit of detail in the engineer summaries. And then lastly, architectural, we take a look at the infrastructure of the building, the envelope. We look at the doors and the windows. We talk about the roof in the building, kind of give you a snapshot of, again, what condition those are in, and give you some recommendations around that. And then, last, within the architectural component, is the, an ADA analysis of those, of each of the facilities, okay? So we went through and documented where we have ADA compliance challenges currently, and ultimately, there you'll see that summarized in writing, and then we have some floor plans to help identify, you know, some of those key areas, okay? So you see, again, that's organized in the same structure for each of the three buildings. And again, when we come back in two weeks, what you'll see is the same structure but for the high school. And then, once we take a look at that, we'll also have some additional detail about some of the academic components that go along with each of the facilities throughout the district, okay? So I think, at the highest level, what we wanted to do tonight was hand this off to you, kind of give you an intro to what to expect as you start to dig into that, but do know, when we come back in two weeks, we'll have kind of an executive summary version of this, as well as be prepared to answer any questions that you may have at that point.
So that's your expectation of us to take this and look at this and-
At whatever level of detail you care to dive into it. Again, when we come back, what we're going to be doing is identifying, we'll have a kind of a laundry list of the recommended focus needs, okay? It's not really our responsibility at this point in the process to prioritize those. We'll talk with you a little bit more later about when we start to prioritize those needs district-wide. All we're trying to do is catalog and inventory them.
Right.
And that's kind of, this is the detailed portion of that.
Really, the only part that's up for discussion is your observation as to replacement or removal or let it stand, because the other stuff is just packed, right?
Yeah, no. Correct, yeah. I would say, when we start to make that analysis, when we start to determine what should be demoed and what should stay, that does correlate directly to what the solution is, and ultimately, the cost impact of different options, right? And so, as we start to examine solutions moving forward, we will look at significant demo, we'll look at, you know, simple renovation, we're cognizant of the investments the district has made in each of the facilities recently, and we want to be sure to kind of respect those and make sure that we're obviously not reinvesting in those areas, if at all possible. So, again, you'll see when we come back, the needs, we'll organize those into infrastructure. We'll talk about safety and security. We'll look at the site and some of the challenges we have on the different sites, and help you to take this and kind of boil it down to kind of the main focus areas.
So when you come back, and we've got the high school listed in here, is there enough time to make sure that the recommendations are as current as possible, given what we've done throughout the two through July or June 30th, that that'll reflect that information?
I'm confident in that.
Because actually, Mike, you're coming this next week again. Their engineers are on site, so it will be very current in terms of what work has been done. So they're not using old engineering information. They're actually, their engineers are coming again this week, next week?
Yeah, Thursday, this week, Thursday.
This Thursday, so I mean, in terms of any work that's been done this summer and planned for it, that will be included in their observation in their final piece of it.
Good.
And you say, you know, some challenges we may have. Do you mean if we just stand pat and don't build anything, or if we are looking to build something?
Yeah, so this is really identifying the challenges you have today. So this is not the solution. So this is really just to say, again, if you do nothing moving forward, this goes into your records in terms of-
Well, but then, there are recommendations in that this needs to be upgraded, or this needs to be removed, whatever.
Correct, yep. Yeah, the identified code-
As our facility's standing now.
Today, correct, yep.
So, and I think that's true, Mike. This creates a very thorough facilities document that, you know, we hadn't seen yet up until this point, and that's why we wanted to be comprehensive, include all four buildings on top of it, not just one of those, because what we choose to do from here on out is really where the crux of the conversation happens next. So by having that high school piece, because I think originally, we didn't have that piece as part of that, and I think as we're looking at priorities and solutions in terms of that, I think that that's critical to have it all, to say that we've not left any stone unturned, as you keep hearing me say throughout this whole process, that we're exploring everything possible, and I think that it's critical to have that. So, Mike, I'm just going to share a conversation we had last week in terms of with school perceptions and that, because I had sort of shared with the board. So we had met-
Friday morning.
Conference call, Friday, did we?
Yep.
Yeah, Friday. We had a conversation with school perceptions, talking about the next survey piece of it and what that would include. So I think after the August 14th date of the high school piece of it and the conversation with the board and seeing that laundry list, we would have between that date and when we decide the survey would be, so like a month or so would have some conversations. I think that that's really the key conversation about where the community would prioritize the needs. So I think that you'll see the list of needs in terms of all of that, and then I think the work that the board has to do is deciding what of those items are critical items that can be covered in the regular operating budget, what need to go out to referendum to get done, and then letting the community input determine the priorities of those things that need attention to. And that's what that second survey in terms of talking with school perceptions and Bray really provided for us on Friday, what the next step is, so.
Right. Really trying to look at the district and all the needs and solutions as a master plan, you know, knowing that we may or may not be able to solve all of them in one capital effort and one referendum effort, but we need to start to plan around all of them. So really, it provides us a structure and kind of a comprehensive list of all those needs, so as we start looking at solutions, we can prioritize and make a game plan for how we're going to move forward as a district, solving all those challenges.
Any other questions tonight? All right. Thank you for coming tonight. Thanks for putting this all together, and then we'll see you on the 14th.
14th, sounds great.
And just in terms, I think, as I shared with the board, but I wanted to share, you know, with the public that this, Mike, this is, there's a PDF document for this that we're going to share with our-
There is.
-community. So if someone wants to give their hard copies back, that's fine, but, so we're going to share with the community a PDF of this document, because it is very comprehensive. There is no way that you could read this in one sitting, so it will have all of the pull-out options and all of that, share that, so people can just start to see it. It is what it is, and I think, as Quinn stated, it's facts. It's not a matter of, so people can actually see and get a very in-depth look at, from the engineering standpoint, the ADA standpoint, the facilities, some history. It's a great document even to have from a historical standpoint, to have it all collected in one piece of it. So we will be sharing that with the public as soon as we, in terms of what this looks like, because I know it's hard if you're looking at this, not seeing what the document is in front of you. We will be sharing that with the public, so.
That's great. All right, thank you very much.
So when I'm reading this, and I see, you know, you got one, building entrance, and then this one eight, that tells me, like, what you found out about that, whether it's, like, five, five is maneuvering, thresholds, push and pull. And then you have what we have, and then you have five A, B, and C, and this is, there are areas where requirements, thresholds, move. So that's where that A, B, or whatever it's going to be, where it's going to suggest or state if it's compliant, if it's not, if it's run down, if it's on its way out, if it's in great shape.
Yep, so what you're referencing right there is the ADA compliance sheet, so what that is, is a list of all the items we look for when we do a general ADA review, and then on the subsequent page, you'll see a floor plan where we identify where we have those specific challenges throughout the building.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all, very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Item six A is a glance at achievement data, the ACT and Whitman High School graduate survey.
So we talked last time about the redefining ready report card of district scorecard, what that looks like, and starting to look at some data. So we thought it would be helpful if we started to chunk out some of the data to look at ours, and we thought, in terms of providing the board that. We're still collecting our AP historical data, so two pieces of data that we're just going to briefly look at. Again, it's not decision-making, but in terms of getting the board caught up to speed and getting a little bit more working knowledge with what we're talking about, we're going to look at both ACT data historically and our recent ACT data that we got back. So some of it's a new look in terms of the 2017. And then, it had been, we gathered the graduate survey that we had talked about before. You'll see that that's shared in there. We can talk about that a little bit, and what historically has been done. We are still leading a little bit from that, and I'll talk a little bit more on that in terms of getting some historical all-in-one instead of just some hard copy surveys. So, I can advance it if you want.
Do we have this in our packet?
It's in the folder.
It's in the folder, that ACT folder. So we want to see you, though, in terms of camera, you can't be seen, so, yeah, so, yeah, you can.
Which document is this that you have on the screen?
This is the-
It's in a whole folder of ACT data.
I have that.
Yes.
There's several documents in there, and I'm just asking which one he's got of.
The WHS historical ACT average score.
Bring your sheet.
Average score. Yep. Okay, so basically, this spreadsheet kind of gives us a historical perspective on how our students have achieved in each area of the ACT, as well as the composite, and the specific percentage of the student population in terms of ACT readiness. Now, those readiness scores, as we all know, the ACT is based on scores from zero through 36. That one document that was entitled ACT benchmarks kind of gives you guys the norm of where students fall. So for example, English is an 18. So even though 36 is the highest a student can score, ACT determines a score of 18 or higher, the student is college, has hit that college readiness mark. So pre-2014-15 school year, the ACT was strictly optional. Whoever wanted to take it, as we know, it was a major criteria for getting into any four-year university as well, you know, continuing education. However, the state, in its mission to make sure all students are college and career-ready, you know, mandated that every student needs to take it. And you can certainly see that in that first column there, in terms of enrollment and percentage of students tested. We went up, on average, 26% of our student population that normally wouldn't take the ACT is now being forced to take it, and statewide, that was felt. As you see on average there in the composite, the dropped roughly about two full points. So needless to say, the scores in each area, as well as the composite, are a little lower, but they're staying steady, because historically, if you look throughout the composite, and we have to decide what we're really looking at here, this is a wealth of data, and this is just scratching the surface. We can get in, you know, really dive down in each individual sub-area, and within the math scores, there are certain other skills that we can drill into too. So right now, this is just, like I said, a surface view and kind of the trends, and that's why did they average the mean from historical mean to the pre-2014 mean, and then the post-mean as well in all those areas. So if you want to go, could you go to the, sorry, I have a lot of tabs up top here, the meeting tables right there? So right here is where I kind of broke it down to make it a little bit easier to read and follow. So up there, the differentials between the pre and the post is kind of what I wanted to point out, and once again, that level of participants going up, the 26%, and obviously the negative correlation with a lower percentage of students reaching that readiness benchmark. If you go further down, the historical means between the pre, the pre-mandated ACT and the post-mandated ACT, our numbers are actually higher in the post when it's mandatory, but all that's really saying is that our, traditionally, our students that wouldn't take the ACT are stronger than those students traditionally that wouldn't take it around the state. That's essentially the conclusion we can reach there. So, oh, and then, if you go to the area high school ACT college readiness benchmark. So this was created in October of 2016, using the 2016 ACT score, so this would be the class that just graduated, their ACTs. So all district assessment coordinators at the time, Tony Brzezowski sent this to me, and students that wanted to contribute to this Google Doc, you know, that chose to, those were the ones that, on it, I left it on there for about a month, and that those were the final nine schools that contributed to it. So we are currently sitting right there, second from the bottom in terms of overall percentages, but once again, these are the schools that only chose to share it. We have no idea where we fall in line with the other area schools. But also, it's valuable information as well. For example, what is Pewaki doing? What is their curriculum looking at? These are questions we can start answering and looking into as we go through the data. So at this time, I mean, questions, that's pretty much-
Ryan, do you have, like, what percentage of our students met, like, 18 as a percentage? Like, 38% is that, did I miss that on the chart? Like, if 18 is the college readiness score-
How many scored above 18 and above?
Yeah. Because in terms of the redefining ready report card, they've sort of looked at that, like, you know, did 80% of our students get 18 or above, or what does that percentage look like? And I know that's not a typical way of looking at it, but maybe I-
Yeah, can you go back to that initial Google sheet, please? Yes, and then can you scroll to the right, please? Yep. Percent that met benchmark score in English. So I have the high school and the state there. So 77% of our students got an 18 or higher in English, and then on down the line. And finally, if I'm just going off of this year's most recent data, the final one at the end is met all four benchmarks in all four areas, so are certified college and career-ready in all areas of the ACT. 24% of our students hit that mark this year.
So Lisa, are you thinking that that would be a more appropriate thing to center a goal around?
Right, so I think I want to, right, I asked Ryan to share, because he had been working with it for a couple of years now, in terms of different ways of looking at it, because there is the composite ACT, there's looking at it compared to the state, there's looking at it to local area school districts, there's a lot of different ways in terms of how we look at it. For example, this year's juniors moved up .1 point in our composite, but so did the state. So we seem to keep pace with where the state did in terms of ours, but that doesn't necessarily, I mean, is that okay? Are we expecting to, you know, when you added 26%? So I think one of the interesting facts that Ryan shared was that the students who weren't previously taking it and that are pre, are taking it now, are doing much better than those in the states that didn't take it before. So that's an interesting piece, which speaks to the whole student body differently, because you'll see some school districts that added those that weren't taking it significantly dropped their ACT score because there was such a gap between. So what that means is there may not be as big of gaps in terms of some of those things. There's a lot more analysis we can be doing, but I guess the question really becomes what it is that we want to put out there. Are we just trying to look at the ACT composite, or are we trying to use what's called that college readiness by saying if ACT is doing the data, and I think John referred to it as sort of reverse engineering it, and telling you consistently, the data is showing that that's the score that show that students are graduating from college more successful. Are those more critical pieces, do they provide us more detailed information or implications for English, math, science versus just a composite score? So it does dig down a little bit deeper and allows our teachers to have a little bit different types of conversations than maybe they have in the past, so.
And as a staff, we do have an achievement data council that does go over this. There's representatives from each department. We kind of look over the data as a whole, I send it out to them, and then those members, we kind of get together and talk and decide, you know, what we want to look at. There was kind of some drafting of ideas as far as, are we just going to lay all this data out in front of the staff, because then it's going to become overwhelming, because these files are, you know, enormous? Or, and furthermore, the more important question, does our staff really know how to analytically look at data? Have they been taught? Some of us have, and some of us have not. So we started this year to draft kind of a questionnaire to have teachers ask themselves these questions as they go through kind of the surface data, and we broke it down by departments and by skills within those subject areas, and even also breaking down the readiness levels of those students that took the ACT Aspire, which we all know correlates directly to the mandatory ACT testing that students take every spring. The first year it was taken, it was in fall and spring, which I wish we kept doing, because we could measure that growth within the freshman year, but certainly, those aspire scores too are very beneficial in seeing, projecting where that student may end up. And kind of those students that are red, as we call it, in need of improvement, yellow, kind of on the fence and green, and kind of we were talking about this year, those yellow kids, those kids that just need that little extra push to get in the proficient range, how can we reach those kids?
How long has the achievement data council been around?
I would say roughly, would you say, Jackie, two years now?
Yeah, second year.
Second year.
So what are, do you have any examples of goals or tasks that you set up last year based on the ACT information that you use throughout the year to build it in the curriculum?
This year, we had the idea of establishing action plans with what the departments felt they could influence within their classrooms and within the curriculum, and a lot of the staff chose to implement the, you know, practice questions at the beginning of every lesson, and whether or not that was fulfilled or not. During tests, are they taking actual, fitting it within the unit, but pulling from the, you know, past examples of ACT questions? Are they integrating that into those tests? And I know for a fact, science has been doing that. Math has been doing their warm-up activities as ACT prep questions that correlate with the unit. So they're really trying to embed it in the unit. I guess the area that we, the jury's still out on is, is there specific prep that our students need to be doing? A prescribed course? Or, you know, in our, or is that to, you know, are we pigeonholing our kids, saying that here, you're going to take this direct instruction ACT course when we're focusing on personalized learning and differentiation of learning styles? Because as we all know, with the ACT, you know, you don't want the kids to study what they already know. So there's kind of those questions that we got to sift through and find out what's important and the best way to go about preparing our students for this.
So has there been any discussion about the ACT prep or changing it? Because I know that there is a company that comes and offers courses.
We have Navient.
Right.
And kids can take as a course, and they don't have to take it within their schedule. So that's an option available to all students prior to the ACT, NHS runs a program, as well as there's a short course that's a canned program where they come in and they meet with the kids. So there's three options available.
So does this also encompass some analysis of that as to whether or not we need to-
This does not include, this is not, this is broad versus looking individually at kids.
Yeah, and with the Navient's program, it, I think, roughly when talking with Jim Krolakowski, Gary, and his students, kind of oversaw the program. By the end of the course, they've essentially taken the ACT roughly seven times, and it gives them reports on what areas they obviously excel at, and then kind of provides them questions that they routinely struggled on, so building upon those skills. And one thing to, you know, in these past three years, with the mandatory ACT, what I'll keep in mind, that a lot of these students, this is the first time they're encountering it, and they're using it as a practice test, because they know they'll probably be taking it two or three more times, and as studies show, the more times you take it, I think on average, they say you jump two to three points. So a lot of times, this is the first time our students are encountering it, and a lot of this data is reflective of only those school scores.
Do we have any, any data that breaks it out by how many times that students have taken the test? Like, can we say, oh, do we have any data that says, okay, these are the scores for all first-time takers, these are scores for all second-time takers?
I believe with, the more frequency the student takes it, and any of you that know this better than I can correct me, I think it, I think it takes their highest score and it averages it, not the most recent.
I just wonder if we have any, any data like this, this-
We were not tracking it based on-
No.
...the number of times. We were not tracking it based on the number of times they reported to guidance.
Do we have the ability to track that? Is that data provided to us to be able to break it out?
Well, if they're paying for it on, on their own, I don't know if ACT.
Are we a testing center, Jackie?
We are a testing.
If you're a testing center, you should get the CD every time that it's taken here. And so you have, if you input, if you upload it every time it's taken, then you would have it in IC in terms of that. So the, John, the answer is yes, short term? We're not currently doing it that way, but it could.
We're not looking at it, but if the data is provided to us.
We could look at it that way as an option, yeah.
So are we teaching to take the test?
Teaching to take the test? I think they're teaching the strategies and the skills and the content needed. But I mean, in terms of.
So if you score, if you score 27 on a ACT, are you a well-rounded kid?
That's a great question. I don't, that's, I think that's more of an opinion.
It sounds like we're teaching to do good on a test. And, and if we are doing that, do kids learn? Do kids comprehend for long term?
I think those are obviously very, I mean, very good questions in terms of what we want to look at. How much merit do we want to base on the ACT? And how, how much of our district goals do we want to focus on this test?
Because, I mean, we look at the numbers. Everybody wants to put a number and that's what counts and that's what gets printed. We go back to our.
Redefining ready college and career readiness, yeah.
I'm not smart here, I'm just trying to remember.
No, you are.
And, and so why are we getting beat up by Japan and China? Because they don't teach the scores, they teach for, to think outside to think. I'm sure, I'm not putting it to you, but I'm sure we're not changing this overnight either, but.
I also don't think that the teachers are teaching to the test. They think that what they've tried to do is look to see in what we are teaching and what our curriculum calls for, can we incorporate within that? So if, if there's a lot of questions that refer to graphs on the ACT test, can we make sure that on every unit, we ask that type of question so that kids have the feels and they're prepared to look at a graph and answer that question, but using our curriculum as the base?
Yeah, I mean, there's no way if we would make the decision saying, we're going to change, well, none of our kids will get accepted to college, right? I don't know.
I think, I think overall post-secondary institutions are becoming a lot more holistic. And I think that's part of what we need to spend a little bit more time doing right now. I think we haven't done that to really talk to our post-secondary institutions to figure out what it is that they're do, what they're looking at from an application. I think we put a lot of emphasis on that. And I think people might be surprised that they look a little bit broader than what we think. Obviously, an ACT score is an easy way of trying to look at some data. But I think they're also trying to be a little bit more holistic in what they're looking at that makes a student successful. And I think that's where this whole redefining ready is coming from, is they're saying it's not just a test score, what are some other skills? Because there's also a lot of research, no offense to anybody, but that the valedictorian isn't always your most successful person afterwards if you're looking at things like entrepreneurship or some of the other things in terms of it. They're very compliant because that's part of what the system has taught. So I think that in all of that, it is the well-rounded piece. And I don't know that there's trade-offs for one or the other. I would never say sacrifice one for the other. I mean, obviously you have to look at both of those. But I do think it's the conversation we're going to have to have because we can't holistically do everything. Like if, if we're going to say that our goal is to raise that, and some districts do, they put a lot of weight on what, whatever it is, students taking an AP test, a composite ACT, that becomes a priority. That's where we're going to have to have the conversations here about where, because we can't do it all, obviously. And if we believe in a well-roundedness, then we look at more things like, does every graduate participate at least in one co-curricular activity? Because that creates a well-rounded piece of it. Or that they do 25 hours of community service or whatever that is. That's the conversation. So this is a great starter. We didn't come tonight, if you noticed, with recommendation, we wanted to gradually just, we'll put all of this data in a folder so we have it. But we will have to make some priorities in terms of where are we going to put it? And where do we put our time and effort in terms of, you know, what is our goal? Is it, are we okay with where our composite score is in terms of what the community talks about? Are we okay with that if our students are getting? I guess the question really relies a lot, which, you know, John has talked about before, our postgraduate survey in terms of how are they doing? Are they successful? What are the things that we could have done better so they could have been more successful? I don't think a lot of them are going to come back. You should have given me a higher ACT score, honestly. It's going to be on things like collaboration, communication, financial literacy, independent living, all of those things that we think we know. So I think that that's part of our journey this year in figuring out what that all of is and where we spend our time.
Well, we were a district, not too old, our goal was to increase the ACT, right? Brad first came on the board, that was the goal. By what, a point a year or what was it?
Jackie, do you remember?
We originally had a goal of 23 and a half.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry.
And where were we? When we started this goal?
Oh, I have a little.
What should be on the board? What year was it, Quinn? What year was it, Quinn?
Pardon?
What year was it?
I have no idea.
Isn't that number right up on the board there?
Good, three to four years ago.
It should be right up on the board.
But anyway.
Three or four years ago. I'm just saying that we were, and so I guess.
If you remember though, part of that goal was looking at students as individuals and not, you know, understanding that like if I'm at, if I'm at a 15, my chances of increasing my score to a 23 and a half in a short period of time aren't very good and it's not realistic. And so a lot of our work revolved around, we had fancy formulas for figuring out, you know, what would it mean for that student on a daily basis to improve? And that was when they were doing the explore and the plan and then doing the ACT. And there was a little bit different scoring system. And that's how we were looking at individual students so that we could track that progress.
So to Quinn's point about teaching the test and well-rounded students, I, I see your point. I don't see any, I can't see how we would find correlation between a high ACT score and a well-rounded student that's looking at like two different things. But one thing that, one way of assessing an applicant to a college that colleges look at is ACT score. But another thing from what I've seen lately and from what I've heard as well is, is the well-roundedness, you know, extracurriculars and that kind of stuff. The counselors are, are trying to encourage, as I've seen, trying to encourage kids to take, to get involved in different things, whether it's band or, or orchestra or some sports or things like that, working on the well-rounded part of it. But I think the district also is serving the students by working on the ACT part of it. If they're, in order to improve scores, one thing that students have done on their own, whether it's for medical college admissions tests or the MCAT or ACTs or whatever, is they can take prep classes, prep courses to improve scores. And many students do. If the, if the district is, is offering that or putting that in the curriculum, it seems like they're just trying to work on one more facet of the, the various variables that, that universities, colleges look at. Of course, in those prep courses, that is what they're doing is they're teaching to the test. You're trying to give students or, you know, people that are going to take the test techniques to improve their scores. There are certain ways, I've taken a few of these, and there's tests and there's certain ways to be able to speed up how you're looking at certain types of questions and how to analyze them and things like that. So in a sense, teaching to the test, I mean, it depends. If you gear your whole math program or math curriculum around just targeting improved ACT score for the math portion, maybe that's not quite appropriate. But making sure that you incorporate the skills that ACT tests in, in general as, you know, so you're not missing things, I think that would be appropriate. So we, we probably teach the test some in certain ways, especially ACT prep type stuff. And it doesn't necessarily make a well-rounded student, but it does improve their chances of getting into the schools they want. That's my opinion.
Yeah, so I don't think we'd sacrifice one for the other, but it's how much emphasis or are we saying that that's the only thing? I think that there's a lot of those career readiness things that typically schools haven't put out there and tried to benchmark to improve it. And that's where I think we're going to have some real dialogue around here in terms of what do we think is important? And do we want to make any of them a graduation requirement? In terms of community service or whatever that might be, or just sort of hope kids do that? How much effort do we want to spend on any of those things? So I think that's where the conversation will be.
Is our plan at this point, I mean, your plan, whatever it is, are we going to start going and asking Pewaki and Greendale and Sussex Hamilton, et cetera, what they're doing and try to compare it to what we're doing and see where the difference lies? Is that one of our goals of what we want to do? Because I know you said those numbers were all self-entered, correct?
Correct.
So we take for what it's worth, but it's still kind of a gaping percentage. If they're obviously doing something, why not learn from it?
I can see with some of those schools on that list and just casually talking with administration at the other schools, it's either, you know, a prescribed course that they're having, that a lot of their students partake in, or prescribed ACT prep in homerooms. There are scheduled support periods that are built in within the day, particularly for their juniors leading up to the test. So a lot of them have put their own spin on their own inventions within their own class or school schedules to make it work for their kids.
Is the prep also kind of sort of taught from a similar curriculum standpoint? Like we all use this kind of same prep book and try to go off of that? Or how is that, how does that compare what we do compared to what they're doing? I guess just in general terms.
I, I, I can't answer that. I mean, I'm not sure which programs they're using. So without knowing the program, I can't really compare it to what we have.
Gotcha.
Pewaki is using Navian, so we did meet with them prior to purchasing and making that. But they run there a little bit differently than, than we offer ours, where it is the same program.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Just spent a couple of minutes on the other folder of data that you have. And this refers back to, and Jackie feel free to jump in at any time. So we had mentioned before that there were some graduation surveys that had been given. And unfortunately, the way that they do the reports, you have to do it sort of question by question. It's not a comprehensive one. So there's 2014, 2015 in there in terms of survey data. Let's take a look at one of these, if you want to take a look at them. What Jackie is hoping to do, need to contact. Is for, it's used through the company's school perceptions, which we've used through the referendum and continue to use. What we're hoping is they can give us the data files in an Excel format so we can use the data and give it into historical context so we can see if there's any significant changes in things like overall satisfaction. But this was in terms of what was asked about what is on the survey from graduates. You can see the types of questions as far as, you know, how do you make your course selections? How do you feel the high school did in preparing you for some things? They do some, obviously they have some metrics in terms of the overall satisfaction rate. You know, we don't require right now in terms of students to take it. So when you look at 148th of our students, considering we have 200 around to, from a graduating class, it's about 75% of our students just under that that take it. So there's a lot of questions in terms of, you know, moving forward with this data or this survey if we feel, so Jackie, this is taken in May, June? When is this given?
Yeah, I'm friends, yeah.
Okay. So, so in terms of that timing, I think, you know, we've talked a lot about trying to do follow-up data. So this is before they've really entered anything post-secondary at this point. Whatever their plans are, the question really becomes a year out, two years out, five years out. How is, how is their perception on some of this stuff really changed in terms of, do I really, now do I think that my high school is preparing me now that I've experienced life a little bit? That really becomes the critical question. And that's really where our data needs to focus on beyond that. So there is some data here that we can use in terms of how they felt right after they graduated. But the bigger question becomes is once they've experienced life, how are they feeling about it now? And what implications does that have for us moving forward in terms of how prepared they are for whatever their choices are, whether it's military, career, college? So there is some data that's there. We're hoping to get it a little bit more tighter in terms of looking at that. It would give us some baseline data to compare from year to year to what our graduates are thinking. It's a start. It's nothing that right now, I mean, you can see the variance in terms of standard deviation on some of the data. I don't know that it's significant statistically right now, but I mean, nobody rates us poorly. I mean, our averages are for the most part very positive from our graduates, so.
What about the 16, 17 data?
We don't, we've not been given any current data from this past little year.
And what about 16?
I didn't, I, you have to go through and you have to turn everything into a PDF once they're there. And so I just went through and gave some samples. All the questions each year are the same, very similar to the survey that they do for the referendum. It's the canned questions because when they're using it to, you know, compare. So part of the decision would be, do you want to move forward with those same canned questions or are there other questions that were?
So for, I think we have classes of 2014, 15 in there. And what, the question to school perceptions is can we get the raw data? Because otherwise we have all these PDFs that really aren't very, I mean, they're, so that was the question, John, in terms of, was Jackie, was class of 2014 the first one that we had given?
No, we have a back, I think it started when my first year's principal, so I think back to 12.
Okay. So we're hoping to get 12 through 17 that we just finished in some Excel data that we can actually provide. And it'll be a lot easier to look at than all of these separate PDFs. So we sort of stopped that, but I did want to provide so you could at least see the types of questions that we were asking. But in terms of true data, and again, it's a great starting point. It doesn't probably give us the really important data questions that we ask after that, so.
So I think this gives us part of what I had requested to see what kind of questions we ask them. As, you know, I'd still like to see the, the 16 and 17 results. And it might be useful to know if we're, I mean, you know, we see some of these results here, we can know if we're doing, in a sense, better if we track from year to year and see how the responses shift. If they, if they shift. So we can't, we can't really do that with just.
Correct. And once we recognize that, and Jackie said too, it is a very tedious process to log it each time we get a question report like that. So it's, it's, it's just to give us a look so you can start to rev your minds around, because I think before people didn't even have any idea of what questions we were asking them. Now we have this, but the true data is yet coming. So it's not a decision-making thing here. But, and I think to Jackie's point, we were talking about it because we are, you know, paying for the service. The question is, can we get the same data ourselves without having, and have access to our own data a lot quicker, faster and ask questions that are less canned and maybe get to, if we realize like these aren't really the questions we want to ask them, we might, so we might have some more flexibility moving forward in terms of, you know, if survey mic here, whatever we decide to use, we might have that.
But we don't lose the data we've already created. So is there a problem with getting the raw data from?
That's the question we have posed to them right now. We're waiting to hear back.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, I know it's not in here, was there any sort of, at the end of the survey, a feel free to add comments section or anything like that?
I don't want to give you the wrong answer. I don't recall if it's, it gives you access to the actual, like what, what's just the list of the survey questions without any of the results?
Yeah.
I recall that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Let's start, thanks. Thank you. So six C is graduation venue.
So we had had this conversation, it was asked, and so we've done a little bit of preliminary research, and I think Todd has, has got some information. I know I've asked Charlie to look at some of that, where we're at. So I think the question really was about initially like, have we looked at Falcon Field? What does that look like? Have we looked at other venues? And so I'm going to let them, we haven't made any decisions clearly, but what I would say is that if there's going to be a change in venue, that potentially might mean a change in date or, or time of the day or whatever. We need to make that very soon because families would be planning for whatever that looks like. So Todd, I'm going to start with you in terms of Falcon Field stuff and stuff that you've done. I know you don't have all the clocks and pieces of that, but maybe just share what you've found out up until this point.
Right, so as far as we have done on Falcon Field, our concern with that is setting up chairs on the football field and the track. We need to cover the areas of the field and the track where chairs will be set up, which could get quite expensive. How would we have to rent an additional amount of chairs? Because we would have to set up in the gym as well in case of another. I have done some checking into renting of a cooling unit for the gym. I don't have any others back on that yet. There are a few options. One option is just for the day to rent. Second option is something that might be suited for three or four months out of the year when we actually need it in the gym. So those options are out there, we're working on giving cost back for each of them. That's pretty much what I have right now.
Anything to add, Charlie? I know that we were looking at pricing potential of other venues, but.
Yep, so we, we had conversations about Miller Park, and they're not easy to get a hold of, especially this time of the year, to find someone who can discuss anything other than buying tickets. But then also, Dave Pentec, activities director, and myself also talked about possibly like Milwaukee Theater or some other larger venue as well downtown. And so we've just got, we've got some calls and feelers out to those locations to kind of start getting some pricing and logistical pieces. Some of the larger institutions, you know, MATC, UWM, whatnot, use those venues and kind of get first dibs on when they want, you know, dates and times.
So in terms of where, what it is, you know, that we're trying to accomplish in terms of, I know that temperature has been a concern. I mean, I heard that coming into it in terms of that day. I noticed a couple of things like seating. It'd be nice if there could have been a few more chairs, but that's a simple accomplishment thing. So I guess in terms of where the conversation goes from here, you know, we're, we're doing some preliminary stuff in terms of that. I think one of the things we talked about that is, if we did it at Falcon Field, besides what I think Todd just shared, probably at one o'clock in the afternoon is not an optimal time to be holding that ceremony. It would be quite hot with the sun beating down, so you would have to look at changing it probably to an evening time. Because early in the morning, you have the sun and all of everybody's eyes who are in the bleachers. So I think that there would be looking at a time change in terms of that. The other part that when I met with Dave and Charlie, the conversation was, is that weekend is state track meet. So in terms of cha, using that weekend and making it a Friday night or even Saturday evening would get a little bit tricky. We had athletes who were at the state competition, seniors. We wouldn't want them necessarily making a choice next weekend is state softball after that? We were trying to do that. Yeah, and so we were trying to look at, you know, where you wouldn't have athlete competitions in terms of making choices between, do I go to my high school graduation ceremony? Or possibly playing a championship game, right? So we're looking at some of the options. Different districts have it, some have it. On Thursday night, some have, there's a lot of different options. But I think the decision is sort of comprehensive. And I didn't know how much research or where we're going in terms of that or what costs things or. So I guess I wanted to have this here to sort of think, you know, to say, keep researching, bring back, you know, the cooling unit, bring back the cost of doing that. Just looking at, you know, what the direction is from here.
Any initial thoughts, reactions?
Well, if we did have it, say, at ten AM in the gym, I know there has been many, not many, but some student athletes that rushed to get back at one. So ten would probably be a problem. If we went with no cooling unit, if we just went, just changed the time and.
On a Sunday, you mean?
Yeah.
I don't think the gradu, making it to graduation has been so much of an issue. We excuse them from practice. I had never encountered a student who struggled to get there.
Even if they were in a, they had a very.
I think it would be done on Saturday.
On Sunday, it would be done.
Yep. So if, if they are in state track, usually they're, they're finished about five, six o'clock. And it's usually out in.
On Saturday.
On Saturday.
On Saturday.
Okay. Okay.
So we were saying, if it went to Saturday evening, like at six-thirty, that would be challenging for them. And I don't know that you'd want to go to a Sunday at six-thirty because of, you know, the next day for a lot of people. So what, a lot of them do it Thursday night. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of options in terms of what that looks like.
So if we rented a cooling unit, it would cool down by one o'clock?
The cooling unit would be based on the square footage of the gym. So we would, we would probably rent it the day before, bring it in, get it set up, start it up the day before if we would, and then let it run off of it.
So as far as cooling down that goes, I was, I, I know the question was the options for the possibility of holding it at Falcon Field. But looking at cooling down the gym, I was recently at a graduation where they had an inflatable ductwork system, similar to one of the gymnastics centers here, and it worked very well. And it was definitely a retrofit to the, to the facility. So I was going to get contact information and share it with Todd. He was curious to, to see what something like that would cost. Because we did have some estimates and ideas on how to do a cooldown, how to permanently put something in from Matt, which would be to, to put in some ductwork and to swap over from one part of the building to the gym a couple of days prior to the, to an event that we would want to make sure it was cool for. So I, I'll still get you that stuff just to, so we can look at possibilities and brainstorm.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So keep pursuing different options? I mean, I guess they want some kind of.
Well, I think that, I think if we take it to an outside venue, say downtown, people are going to be shocked the first year because of the cost of parking and the cost of whatever and just. But I think if we do something, we need to look at it as that long-term, is my opinion.
Absolutely.
I think if we do it here, then we move back and. And then it costs to rent these facilities, obviously. So I think.
I agree.
To rent a, a one-day cooling unit, it probably is the most economically sound decision. However, the gym floor for volleyball gets swatted up and is dangerous to student athletes on the court. We've had situations this, this past year that we had to knock down the floor, you know, because we don't have a facility that gives climate control.
So Todd, you had said something mentioned about getting it longer term too.
Whereas, so I asked for three options. I asked for a day or two rental. I asked for a two- or three-month rental, which is, could actually potentially turn into a permanent solution. With the two- or three-month rental, it's actually a cooling unit that's brought outside of the building that's on a trailer, that's left on-site for two or three months as long as we rent it. But there's actually ductwork installed in the gym that that hooks up to, which is permanent. Which down the road, if we add another chiller or have other options to permanently cool the gym, then we utilize that ductwork that's included. So I asked for three options.
Could the roof hold, support the weight of a unit? A permanent unit?
I don't believe so. Given the permanent option would be on the ground level outside the building. Number one, it's easier to service it. And number two, we don't need to worry about the structure of the road.
So how long do you think you have a response back to those quotes? Week two?
Hopefully, hopefully in two weeks.
So why don't we just put it back on the agenda on the fourteenth? Obviously, this will be recorded, so if people have ideas or suggestions on what to do. So it's obviously venue, whether we keep it here and expand to possibly Falcon Field and the gym and the backup. If we can have a chiller, if we look elsewhere larger. And then obviously, whether we move it to like a Saturday night or keep it Sunday at one. Right? And that's ultimately.
Yeah, and the reason for changing the date would be is if you held it out.
Sure. No, but I'm saying, but having those, those are kind of the variables we're looking at right now. Okay, so on the fourteenth, we'll bring it back again and kind of see what we've got so far. All right, thank you. So item seven is items for future consideration. The spreadsheet's been updated. We covered three of the items that were listed on it tonight. Obviously, there's more discussion that's going to come from it, but we're at least making an effort to get those crossed off, so.
Appreciate it.
Any other items for future consideration?
I was surprised it was updated. I really was. Especially my item. I usually don't get, you know, I usually go, yeah. I looked, because I was going to get, I was going to have a smart aleck remark here. And I, that's what I could, because it was updated. Now you got to see if you stick to that update.
Hey, we, Kathy and I are keeping up with it.
Very good.
We just make sure it's done, so we're good to go.
Great job.
Any other? Okay. Board member announcements. Anyone?
Volleyball starts, man. Girls volleyball, camp this week.
Any others? Okay. And at seven-twenty-nine, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Close. Motion carries. And we have fifteen seconds to spare.